All right, good evening. And welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Worcester City Council being here, being held this Monday, October 21st, 2024. Tonight's meeting is in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube, and it is after seven o'clock. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Monday, November 4th of 2024. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the attending council members?
Mr. Abernathy?
Here.
Mr. Gaffey?
Here.
Mr. Husey?
Here.
Ms. Knappich?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and the agenda will remain as presented. And just for clarification, for council members, I'm assuming you all received the revised agenda, so that there's only nine items on it, not 10?
I did not.
Because at that point, it changes the numbering.
I did not.
So...
It was sent. I did not receive it. I went back and looked after you told me this morning, and I never got it.
Hmm, okay.
This is kind of confusing on the email. Like you have to open the thread.
That's right, I couldn't get it opened.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe it was there, hidden in something.
All right, well, we'll...
Okay.
Oh, you and I, Scott, so we'll, we'll figure out where we're at.
There you go, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
We'll sort it out.
No, it should probably come out in the same format as the initial one, that way we could see that it was new.
So, the new agenda will remain as presented, and with that, I'd ask members of the public and council to stand, and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, so moved by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved from the last meeting. Mr. Mayor, floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, council, good evening. Just some events that have taken place since our last council meeting, and the first one I'll put a footnote on because it actually happened the Friday before our last council meeting, and that was October 4th. We had a visit to Worcester from Beth Hammack, who's the president and CEO of the Federal Reserve Bank in Cleveland. She spent the day in the community visiting some businesses and touring the downtown. One of the thanks to Steve Matthew for arranging, and also, we got a lot of compliments to Matt Fisher and our Worcester PD for the security they provided for the event. Citizen Academy sessions are going on, and again, I highly recommend that to any council members that have not participated in that before, I know some have, or any members of the public that are here that want to know more about how your sister, city operates. We're about halfway through that at this point. The last two were at the Utilities Department on the 9th, and Worcester Community Hospital on the 16th. This coming week, they'll be meeting at the Safety Center, and then we run it every fall. If you'd like to be a part of a future one, contact probably Amy Hamilton at the, in the mayor's office, and she will get you signed up. October 9th was the Greater Wing County Community Foundation Dinner, we had a table there, I know many members were there, if not part of the table, and as part of other organizations they belong with. October 11th, I was regretfully required to buy lunch for Orville Mayor Matt Plyben and Orville Safety Service Director Steve Wheeler as a result of the Worcester-Orville football game results, which didn't go so well for Worcester this time, although it did work out really well, and I've explained this to Joel, and he understands that, he was ill that day, so Phil sat in for him, but it worked out great, just because Orville wants to know all about our transportation program and where we're going with that. They want to very much be a part of that as soon as possible, and Phil was probably the best person to be there to answer those questions, so it really went well. I do hope that next year we have that in Orville, but that's another story. October 13th, I had the privilege of attending Sunday morning services at Second Baptist Church. This was their 132nd anniversary, and I was able to deliver a proclamation. You know, there's always stuff in the job that is not so much fun, and then there's stuff in the job that's very enjoyable, and this certainly fell in the latter category. October 15th, we had another meeting of the Zoning Code Steering Committee. You know, they're taking a comprehensive look at possible changes to our zoning code as it applies to all residential areas, not to be confused with the legislation you're going to see tonight, that addresses some specific zoning code issues that are separate and apart from what they're looking at. So, I, council probably not going to be confused on that, but I want to make sure the public knows that those are two different things. On the 16th, 180, formerly Every Woman's House, had their 50th anniversary, and I know many council members were present at that event. We had an executive committee meeting of the Worcester Growth Corporation on the 17th, and on the 18th, the city center, excuse me, the Safety Center had an open house, and I saw a few of you there, and I hope that many of you did have the opportunity to attend. Looking ahead at the week to come, meeting with Dr. McCall from the college in the morning, at lunch, we're going to meet with the PPM staff and get an update there, with a WARCog meeting in the afternoon. Thursday, there's a Junior Achievement Event in the morning at the Event Center down at Fairgrounds, and in the afternoon, the WDC Economic Forum is going to be held. And finally, that afternoon, there's an open house at the new Worcester Community Hospital wounded hyperbaric center. And then finally, the fun part again, Saturday morning is United Ways, Heart, and Gould Walk, if you, there's probably still time to do walk-ins on that, that's a nice event, particularly if you've got kids or grandkids that like trick-or-treating, so I would strongly encourage you to consider that, if not this year, then in future years. Looking to the agenda, we have nine new items. We're trying to do a better job of making it clear which items need three readings and which ones are budgeted for 2024 to be passed without three readings, and one of the ways that we're going to expedite the process is for me to stay out of it, and Mr. Sanders is going to take over that responsibility for trying to make sure we're clear on that. And having said that, I'm going to risk mudding the water, because we have two items on tonight's agenda that will be part of the 2025 budget, but because we're going to pass them in 2024, they do require three readings. Administration is encouraging council to consider passage tonight of items 1 through 5. This will allow our managers to begin that work now. Item 7 is also an item that deserves special attention, and Vince will be speaking to that when that item comes around. If we pass item 7, there is no urgency to adopt items 8 and 9, and they can go to full free readings and have full, full consideration of council. Item 7 just seeks to preserve the status quo in the meantime. Item 5, seeks authority to begin the process of acquiring rights of way for the extension of the bike loop along East Milltown Road and Melrose Drive. You know, that's been part of our comprehensive plan for a long time, and in this latest iteration was emphasized again, the desire of the community to have connecting bike paths throughout the city. This is part of making that happen. This does require the acquisition of rights of way from property owners there. In most cases, we're able to negotiate an agreement with the property owner in order to obtain those rights, but not always, so that's just what happens when you're expanding city services, whether it's streets, utility lines, or anything else. Do want to give two highlights from Joel's bi-weekly report that went out to council and to the city staff. The Madison Avenue Railroad Bridge closure is in effect now, correct?
Twenty seconds.
Tomorrow? Okay, tomorrow's the day?
Next week, actually.
Okay, got pushed back. So, I know that this is going to be an inconvenience to a lot of people, but I will also say, I know that the city's been pushing the railroad to address that bridge for a long, long time. We've even asked for permission to take care of some of the work ourselves, and we're turned down on that, so this is something that should be a good thing to get done. We'll also point out that we've got a whole, a list in there of engineering projects that are either in process, in-house, or have been outsourced, and I don't want to beat that to death, but I will say, if people want to know more about what goes into the engineering before a project comes to council, we could add another agenda item almost for that purpose. I don't know that council wants to go that way, but I just want to make clear that is an option. John probably, John Rice probably crunches a little bit when I mention that, but he is available if we need him to have there. And then finally, the Fire Station Number One update, we are getting very close on that one, so hopefully in a meeting or two, we'll, we'll have not only news on that being in effect, but we'll also be doing a tour. Last thing I've got, we've talked a little bit, well, quite a bit in the last several months about the transportation issue that we're facing, not just in our community, but throughout the county, and council has authorized us to go ahead and hire a Transportation Director, and that person is Kevin White, and Kevin is here, and we wanted to introduce him to council, and also to ask Kevin to give a brief update on where things stand. So, Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and staff and public, thank you for being here. I just have a quick update right now, so. SARDA, the county's transit operator officially ended service in September, which you guys probably already, already aware of, but if you aren't. Back in the spring, when this came to light, ODOT approached the city and the county about the rural transit program, allowing our community to leverage federal dollars from public transportation. So, we are kind of pursuing the steps to take advantage of those funds. Right now, there's two big stepping stones we're working on. The first step is becoming a federalized transit system, so basically, this entails making sure your city has the proper policies in place to meet federal guidelines, so that includes having policies regarding anti-discrimination, vehicle maintenance, financial operations, et cetera. So, we're kind of working through, and once we have all those boxes checked, the city will officially be eligible to start using some federal dollars. The other big thing right now in transit is we are working on planning a new system, a new transit model. So, currently, we have a fixed bus loop, you've probably seen the black bus around town, that is our share mobility bus, runs on an hour loop. We also have a tax pass program, which you're all well aware of, that provides door-to-door service, or as a consultant, kind of described as a microtransit. The State's Consultant is currently tool design we're working with. They are analyzing all the data that we've had for previous years in terms of privacy and different locations, where it makes sense to either have a fixed loop or microtransit. We're very close on getting a recommendation from them, we're kind of going back and forth and honing in on some details. Right now, we're just in that phase where we're getting a recommendation, we're kind of meeting weekly with our partners, and that's ODOT Consultants, and both the county and Community Action, we're meeting weekly with them, so there's a lot of details kind of still up in the air, but we're hoping very soon to have an update with more details, either a memo, or maybe come back for another meeting and do another presentation or something to kind of give you more, more details. But we're making progress slowly and surely here, we're hoping to get things going here. That's all I really have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Ms. President, that's all we have.
All right, thank you. Move on to our petitions communications from public, which we have no petitions, and while we had some people sign up, that's in the miscellaneous section, which will be towards the end of the meeting. We had no committee reports, we had no public hearings, we have no unfinished business, which moves us into finish the new business for this evening. The first item that we have will be introduced by Mr. Malta, which has three readings, but before, Mr. Malta, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-82, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidders for the purchase of certain materials for the water treatment plants and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, this is for our yearly chemical use at the water treatment processing plant. I do have Mike Fritz here with us tonight to answer any very detailed questions. However, we want to get this rolling early because we need to start buying these chemicals the first week in January as a yearly purchase to treat the water. If there aren't any questions?
I'm just, I'm just curious, I mean, I know we've seen this, usually this piece of legislation is usually in the first quarter of the first of the year, so at this point, I'm curious, why, why are we pushing it forward so, why are we pushing it ahead so far?
We're asking permission to bid, so we're about to bid before the end of the year.
What's, what's changed that's requiring an earlier bid procedure?
I think we did the same with last year. I think it was under number of last year, we went to council here and...
That was last year, year before we didn't.
So, in times past, when we didn't do this, we ended up with a couple of months where we didn't have a contract to buy the chemicals.
Okay.
And I remember, we had some of this discussion, I think, last year, we don't want to get a contract where we could potentially not have a contract.
Understood.
So, it's just trying to time it so that we don't ever have that.
Not a problem. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Doesn't look like it. Okay. So, what do you, what do you have for us there, Mr. Malta?
Well, I move to adopt.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, please.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Malta, is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the motion, or the...
Motion to suspend?
Yes, the motion to suspend the rules, sorry.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Malta? Um, yeah, I would like to move to adopt, motion to adopt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right, resolution 2024-82 is adopted. Next item is another Mr. Malta item, and it is budgeted within the confines of budgeted, so, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-83, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract for cleaning of three stripping towers and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So, this is for the stripping towers, our annual cleaning. We do have a contractor, to my knowledge, ready to, ready to go. It's been the same contractor for a long time, and they do a good job, so we're required to do this by our permits, and it is budgeted.
Any questions? Nope. If not, I would like to move to adopt, motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2024-83 is adopted. The next item will also be Mr. Malta, it is a three reading piece, and Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-84, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for press polymer for waste treatment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And we are in the same type of process here, we're asking for, a little early for next year, and we're just going to purchase these chemicals, this will be starting in January 2025. So, it's the same as, it's a chemical purchase, little different purpose.
Yeah, and again, this is an annual, annual purchase.
Yep.
Any questions, council? If not?
This is for the wastewater, the sanitary?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I would like to move to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right. Would like to, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item is also Mr., oh, I'm sorry, it's Ms. Warden, and it is another three reading item, resolution 2024-85. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-85, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in the Transportation Alternatives Program to accept and apply such funds if awarded, and to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. So, this is a request for the city to apply for funding through ODOT's Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP. If it's awarded, the funds will be earmarked to pay 80% of the cost that it's going to take to construct a pedestrian and multi-use path along Milltown between Commerce Parkway and Friendsville Road. The total cost for the project is estimated at $500,000, and the TAP funding would cover about $400,000 of that cost, with federal funds and the remaining 20% or $100,000 potentially covered by state funds also from ODOT. The city is going to be responsible for 20% of the engineering costs and 100% of the acquisition costs for the project. This is intended to expand and connect the many pedestrian and multi-use paths that we have kind of going through our community, which makes it a lot safer for people that, you know, we're talking about transportation a lot. This is an exceptional way for people to, you know, transport themselves on foot or on bicycle, or the e-bikes that we see all the time, or scooters, things like that. The city is asking that we place this on third and final reading this evening in order to expedite the application process. I understand ODOT usually has some pretty strict application deadlines, and we're always right up against one, so, so I'm going to make a motion to place this on third and final.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Malta?
There's no discussion on these?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
I didn't, I saw the resolution and the information about the attempts to reach the parties, were they...
You're talking about the wrong...
You're on the wrong one.
...resolution.
Oh, what's this one?
Next, this is for...
Oh, my agenda's not right, okay. I'll wait for that one, thank you.
It's the next one.
All right. I have nothing further on this one.
Okay. But along those lines, is there any questions that council has related to this? Okay. So, let's see, we had already called, she had called it, we've got a second.
We can just call the roll now.
Okay, please call the roll then.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 2024-85 is approved. Mr. Rice, you can file your application.
That's what he's doing right now, see, I'm over there.
Push the send button. We're ready.
All right, resolution 2024-86 is also a three reading item, will also be done by Ms. Warden, but first, let Ms. Hamilton read it for us, please.
Resolution number 2024-86, a resolution authorizing the mayor to pursue appropriation of certain property interests from property owners adjacent to or abutting East Milltown Road and Melrose Drive for purposes of proceeding with the Worcester Bike Loop Phase 3 project and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This resolution, and I can understand Mr. Myers' confusion because there, it's very, it's similar in regard to the...
And my numbering is off because I don't have the correct...
Right. But you have a lot of problems tonight.
I have not.
So, this, this resolution addresses the eastern portion of the Bike Loops Phase 3 project, which stretches along East Milltown Road from Cleveland Road to Melrose Drive, and includes portions of Melrose Drive as well. The city wishes to begin filing procedures to acquire portions of 13 unsigned properties with the intent of reaching agreements with all of the owners prior to filing. The city hired West Erie Realty Solutions to procure the necessary easements for the project to proceed. Property owners were initially notified back in April with another round of letters being sent mid-September explaining the easement acquisition process. It stated in these letters that, in most cases, the path will occupy areas where the sidewalk would normally be located, however, there are some temporary and permanent easements that would still be required in order to construct the path. I believe, Mr. Rice, did you send out, or maybe it was Ms. Hamilton, sent out a document titled Exhibit A to all of council, correct? So, okay, I thought so. And that details the precise location of all the requested easements. You really have to probably be a surveyor to understand any of it and be able to pinpoint where they're talking about, but at least, you know, it'll give you an address and a general location. The costs associated with the process are estimated to be around $70,000, and those were previously authorized by council on March 18th. 90% of the overall cost of the project are being funded by ODOT, and I understand this is another situation where we are up against a timeline, and perhaps Mr. Rice can fill us in on exactly what that deadline might be, because I know at least one other council member would like to perhaps hold this for a second reading.
Okay, so, yes, we, we are getting a lot of ODOT funding, it's a 90%, I think a dollar amount, like at least 1.4 million that we're getting for this. So, it's, we won't be able to do this project without the ODOT funding. Now, with the ODOT funding, strings that are attached to it are part of it is adherence to their schedule, because they have money that's allocated based on their fiscal years, and they have made it very clear that with the funding we're getting, we need to stay on schedule, which this is scheduled for construction next year. So, the two big things with construction are acquisitions and utility relocations. And the acquisition process for this one, we started back in April mailing out the acquisition packages to owners, and we have acquired a number of them since then, but some of them have been difficult to track down, and some of them have just been non-responsive, and I've had some feedback about some things that they're not happy about, we try to work through those, but quite frankly, some of it comes down to, it's just not highest priority for them, and they need a push. We've given them plenty of time, and this is kind of a balancing act for us, because we obviously don't want to bring something like this before council, but yet, if we wait too long, then we're going to jeopardize the funding. So, essentially, we've waited as long as we could, we've given these property owners as much time as possible, but now we're up against the ODOT schedule, we do not want to jeopardize the funding, which is why we're here with this item on the agenda.
So, what is the final deadline? I mean, this is slated for three readings, so I'm curious if it's got to be turned in next Monday, why wouldn't we have received it?
Should've come sooner.
So we need to certify to ODOT, it's February 1st is when we need to certify to ODOT that we have all the acquisitions, all the property that we need for this project. But, like I said, some of these property owners, they received their packages back in April, and technically, after 30 days, we can start the appropriation process. So they've had plenty more than the, than the minimum. But just going through that process, and John can speak to that better than I can, as far as just, it gets into the legal system, and a few months goes by in a hurry.
So, the next step in the process is actually filing the eminent domain actions against the property owners that we do not have, that we haven't made arrangements with yet. That can take time. I think we're going to, that's one of the reasons we'd like to have this passed tonight if possible, because I don't know how many people here have had experience with the court system, but it can take some time. And we're going to aim to settle these as quickly as possible once they're filed. We're hoping that we can get some of them settled before we even file, because we're going to send them one more notice out ahead of time. But once they get filed, my goal is to settle them. If not, we may have to follow them all the way through to a trial, we're hoping that's not the case, but that's why we need as much time as possible at this point.
What, what efforts have we made to contact these folks?
While John handles that one.
I've called them, I've sent letters, I've had a lot of dialogue with them. And that's follow-up to, I have a representative from West Erie here, they actually are doing the acquisition for us on this project, but around the beginning of September, I started getting involved with contacting them personally, just to make them come from the city rather than.
Is it, is it that they don't want to do it, or is it truly just like, it's not a priority?
It's, well, I, I can run down through the list and just give you an idea of who we're dealing with, okay? So one of them is a parcel loan by Brightspeed, a utility company. They have many layers and compartments.
Okay.
Exactly. One of them is a shopping plaza, it's commercial property, so again, kind of the same thing. One of them is Redwood Apartments. I had a conference call with them, and they basically said, because of how things are with their lender and just their situation, they would rather just wait until we start the appropriation process. And that's me to push them, and if they answer to, to do something. Another is homeowners association, so again, that one's kind of an odd situation, but they verbally agreed to it, they just haven't signed yet. Two of them have or are in the process of making counteroffers, so we are actively negotiating with them. One of them is out of town, and distance has been an issue to get the ink signature, but they've said that they are agreeable. One of them, I, we've had a lot of dialogue, and we just haven't been able to come to agreement. I feel like we've been very reasonable, but they just have not, have not pledged on their position. One of them, I've called numerous times, I've sent letters, have not gotten a response. And one of, another one has verbally agreed, but it's not yet signed, so.
Okay, so we're not talking confrontational here, there's, there's one that's maybe just wanting to play hardball, but not really saying flat no, and that we have a few commercial entities that are just saying, the nudge will need to come before somebody up the lateral.
Exactly.
Okay, so we're not talking about 12 home, 12 or 13 homeowners that are saying, hey, I don't want this on my property. Okay, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, it helps to go through the list.
Yeah.
To identify what, who the outstanding parcels are, what we're doing.
Okay.
Is there any way that we can get electronic signatures as opposed to ink on the paper? Is, is that legal in this situation?
So, the deed would have to be notarized, so it would be legal, but you'd have to do it through an electronic notary, which is, if you've ever done it, it's kind of an interesting process. But I know the city would probably be happy to set that up for them if, if they were willing to do so.
So I think that would make sense if we're talking about, you know, people who are out of state, which I noticed several of them are, and that way we could get that done probably more efficiently.
I have done that process in the past, so if, if those people are amenable to that, I'm sure we can make that happen.
We'd also have to clear out the ODOT.
Right, right. That was, yeah, I wasn't sure if ODOT would let us do that, or, thank you.
Are there any other questions from counsel?
Mr. Rice, I noted that on parcel 41, it's a, it's a significantly larger amount of money. Is it because it's a larger piece that we want to take from them, or?
That's correct, that's Redwood Apartments, so they have a frontage, actually, they're on the corner of Milltown and Melrose, so they just have a lot more land that's going to be affected.
And they haven't, they haven't accepted the offer, or they're one of the ones that is outstanding that you haven't been able to get to agree?
Well, like I said, I had a conference call with them, and they just said, because they have a lender and they have to, it's a complicated process for them. And whenever I told them our timeframe for the appropriations process and when we're going to take it to council, they said, just, we'll just wait until you start that process, and that will push things along on our end. So they, they made it sound like, doing this, filing, will just speed things up, make it actually easier for the people who I'm talking to.
If that's the case, because what they'll do is, they'll, they'll come to the table and negotiate once you say you're going, we're going to take the property.
Or they'll go to, they can go to jury trial, they can go to court.
Sure, they can go to jury trial.
According, according to Article 1, Section 19 of the Ohio Constitution.
They can absolutely go to it, but most of the time, people don't want to, especially if they're out of state. It's not like they're living on that property.
It's not adversarial, but we, we just, we need to start this to stay on track, and again, to make sure we don't jeopardize that ODOT funding that we're dependent on.
With a company like, like Redwood, especially when it comes to their, their lending, it's a lot easier for them to go back to their lender and say, the, the government entity is now forcing it, rather than them having to go and request it. The lender can him-haw around, but if they come with a piece of paper that says, hey, this is being forced upon us, we need you to sign off on it, the lender then works with a lot more urgency at that point.
My question is, you said you sent the stuff out on April 1st, this is now October 21st, you're asking for these guys to look at this and pass it immediately, so, I mean, not to sound like a, a big meanie, but why didn't we get this 30 days ago, or 60 days ago? If April 1st was when you sent that out, and technically, you had 30 days in which to be able to make the acquisition under Ohio statutory law?
Well, 30 or 60 days ago, we had 10 to 15 additional parcels, so it would've been a longer list.
So if we wait another 15 days, you'll have zero, is that what you're saying?
I wish, but there's no guarantee.
Well, that doesn't, that's not an argument, then, why?
So we don't, this is how we've done them in the past, because we try to.
Wait till the last minute, bring it to council.
We try to negotiate as many as possible before bringing it to you, because this is, like John said, this is last resort, we don't want to do that, unless we get to the point where like, we start, we start calculating backwards, okay, February 1st, you know, if they go to court, and, and it only takes one to stretch that out for several months before ODOT's going to approve it, before, and hopefully not, you know, lose, lose funding when we've got 99% of the rest of them. So we, we usually try to wait as long as we can to make our best effort to, to negotiate as many of these as possible. And, and in our experience, at least as long as I've been here at the city, most of them, once they get, and it's been rare, we've only had, you know, a few over the years that have actually gone the whole, the whole way. But usually, once they get that notice, that usually prompts, you know, to negotiate and settle, and that usually happens. I mean, just looking at the list, there might be two, you know, if somebody's not responding to anything, and one's really not agreeable, then those might be two that end up going.
Of course, those would probably be two that would be default judgment set anyhow, because if they're not responding to this, they may not respond to a court action.
And what we're, they're being offered, and we're required to meet all those federal standards, to hire ODOT-approved appraisers, and review appraisers, a second one, so, you know, we're offering them, you know, a, a very certified, you know, value for these things, not, not lowballing at all in any of these cases.
And we started, they started sending them out back in April, but not all of them were actually delivered in April. That 30-day time period doesn't start until they sign or actually hand the lift. So some of these properties have been difficult to get a hold of, don't have the right contact information. Technically, yes, within 30 days, we could file. I'm going to put Megan from West Erie on the spot and just ask her, on average, how long would you say it takes from the time they receive, in, in general, on acquisition projects, from the time they receive their package to the time they actually sign, just on average?
Once.
So.
Even once they're received.
So normally, it takes more than the 30-day minimum.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I just want to reiterate, there's, there's not, we're not dealing with angry homeowners here. We're, we're just dealing with, most people are receptive, they just haven't signed, one's non-responsive, and, and one is just simply, you know, negotiating, just negotiating tough.
And that, and that's part of why we're able to do this, is because otherwise, if someone just doesn't want to do it, they don't want to make it a priority, and it just sits there, and we don't have this power, then one property owner can delay this project inevitably.
Because the one thing I don't want us to come across is that we're just going to come in and bulldoze and take people's property from them, it's, we're trying, I'm trying to get to the point of, hey, you know, they seem to be willing participants for the most part here, so that's, that's where I'm going.
The threat of eminent domain is what you just described, though, it's taking the property in court.
Without, without the procedure.
Right.
But we are going through due process now.
Right.
And they will have due process if they decide to go to court.
Right.
So we're really not doing anything such as forcing anything on anyone at this point. They have, they have.
No, they can go to court.
Yep, so, but I think we need to keep moving on this, otherwise, you know, people are going to want a bike path, and we're going to have to pay for it all, and federal dollars aren't going to be there.
It's not federal, I believe it's the state.
I'm sorry, state dollars.
Yeah.
Actually, it is.
It is.
It's true, ODOT, they're not federal.
Is it federal?
So, given that the prior piece of legislation is kind of like a precursor to this situation now, just in a different stretch of the Phase 3 loop, I just would like to request perhaps a little bit more time, so that, I mean, I know oftentimes, we get legislation and it's, it's kind of put in, put on our laps to, to suspend the rules and place it on third and final. So if we could maybe have at, at least enough time to do two readings, so that, you know, if there is, and I know that we're going to be up against probably a lot more commercial real estate up in that section of, of Milltown Road, so it would just be nice if we were able to, as, as a body, be able to have the time to receive communication from any of those property owners.
But a lot of the commercials have signed.
The ones in the.
West of Cleveland Road, all of them have signed, except for Brightspeed, and again, that's kind of a different situation with them being a utility. Shopping Plaza on the northeast corner.
No, I meant for the, for the next phase.
Oh, for the next.
Like for the one that we just, that we just kind of passed, so that you can go out for, you know, for.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if, going forward, we would like maybe at least an extra two weeks, so we can, if there are any concerns, that my colleagues can address those.
I think that's my, I don't, I think you've done your utmost best to do, to make this move forward, and a lot of hard work has been put into this, we appreciate that. I guess my, my only point is, you know, you knew it was going to take three readings unless we suspended the rules, so maybe having a heads up a little bit sooner, at least a few weeks, so that we could have had more time with it, would have been helpful, so.
Any other questions?
I guess I just want to clarify, we haven't gotten any hard no responses back from anybody, correct?
Nothing against the path as a whole, but just their particular situations being unhappy with something that's going on right on their property. But again, it hasn't been like, it hasn't been a big issue, I've been able to throw out some options and work, but again, it's really, there's one owner that is just, that's set against what we've been trying to negotiate and what we've been offering up to appease him.
Okay.
But the other one, we've had dialogue, and we've been working through counteroffers with them, and so.
Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, but Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 2024-86 is approved. Go get them.
Okay, next read, next item is going to be by Ms. Knappick, it is a three reading
item. It is an ordinance amending Chapter 1353 of our code relating to fair housing practices. And with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-27, an ordinance amending Chapter 1353, fair housing practices.
Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Sorry about that, thank you. Mr. Scavelli, this came up, I'm assuming because the state legislature and legislation covers the fair housing issues. Essentially, from my reading of this, what it does is it replaces our fair housing code with the state's fair housing code, and that would eliminate the need for a fair housing board in Worcester. Have we had one that's been active in the past?
I think that Mr. Malley would probably be the best person to answer this question, but my understanding is, yes, but it hasn't really done too much recently, is that correct?
Correct, and we've had a fair housing board on the books, however, there has not been occasion for this board to have met in well over a decade, and as of the last year, it's, it's basically been a vacant board. The one reason for bringing this forward is we recently conducted our analysis of impediments to fair housing, and one of the subject areas we discovered was, well, our ordinance hasn't been touched in a little while. The state of Ohio has some really good mechanisms in place, like the Ohio Civil Rights Commission that helped to investigate complaints when they arise, which was one of the things that this particular board was set up to explore. And as a result of going through that analysis of impediments, we took a look at how we can improve upon our code, and it seemed best to be able to employ the expertise of the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, which this references, and to rely on that expertise, that, that professional resource, with, of course, our staff continuing to handle complaints as they come in, either through building standards, we also work with Community Action Wayne Medina on some of that consulting work. I'll separately pass around, we continually update and release information just for the general public, but if anybody has questions on fair housing, we're going to continue to operate our program and provide that education, but we wanted our, as we're looking to work with the state and make sure that we have a coherent fair housing policy, we wanted something that matched and fully incorporated state law, pulling in all of the protected classes, which that has been updated in the last 20 years. So this basically adopts the state legislation, and we will continue to operate our program, which is detailed here and also online, in making these resources available. But again, we wanted the code to reflect modern practice and modern resources.
So we have these resources here, which is great, but when push comes to shove, they would have to go to the state for any real recovery.
Correct, and if maybe, we're obligated separately through our community development block grant participation to provide assistance should those complaints come in, and should someone want help, not just being referred to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, I've personally sat down with individuals in the past to help file complaints, so that is something that we separately obligate ourselves to as C2BG, and also, it's just a service for our citizens that I hope that they would know that that, that is available, that we, we will be a resource to help them through that process if there's any confusion.
Okay, about how many fair housing complaints do we get a year?
So we receive about one complaint, you know, about every one and a half weeks, probably about 35 to 40 complaints a year. Out of those, the vast majority are property maintenance, which a lot of times we're able to say, hey, we can have an inspection sometimes conducted that day. That's a provision by which a lot of tenants might invite us inside the structure to take a look, and then, of course, we follow up on actions to make sure that that is a safe, habitable structure. So that's probably about a third of them, another third are going to be landlord-tenant disputes involving leases, non-payment of rent. And then I'm happy to report that the majority of our calls that are actually fair housing today are landlords who call to say, hey, I'm starting a business, I want to know how to do this correctly, which is refreshing and nice. We didn't used to get those calls early on, so, but we do still receive some fair housing concerns, which we detail a little bit in our pamphlet. A lot of them in our area tend to focus most heavily on accommodating individuals with disabilities. That's not to say that discrimination in other categories doesn't occur, because it does. We've had people, we've had some landlords in other communities nearby still blatantly discriminate on protected classes that would boggle one's mind, but that still occurs. But a lot of it is oftentimes maybe a little more nuanced and subtle, and so we separately track each one of these complaints, and we track how they are resolved. And if you, anybody wants to visit our Worcester Fair Housing site, if you Google Worcester Fair Housing, our fair housing page comes up with all of these resources, but also a detailed update over the call volumes we've had over the last five years and what pertains to them, so...
Good. Appreciate it, thank you. I'm going to leave this on first reading, just because I don't like to pass anything on first reading unless we have to.
And there's no rush.
I didn't, didn't think there was. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Scavelli, too.
Okay, well, ordinance 2024-27 has had its first reading, and with that, we'll move on to the next resolution of 2024-87. It's also a three reading item. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-87, a resolution imposing a moratorium on the granting or processing of permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would allow the retail sale of primarily tobacco or electronic cigarettes in the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I had a lot of, I understand that the city wants us to pass this tonight, but I did have some questions on this. I may be the only one on council that feels this way, because, I don't know, maybe I live under a rock, but this is the first that I've, I haven't personally heard complaints, although I'm not a big fan of the vape and smoke shops at all, but what prompted this?
I can, I can start that, and then Vince can add any additional details to that. So, I mean, what you're going to see later is some changes, actually adds regulations, that's another piece of legislation, adding regulations for these shops. This was, this is just a moratorium, so that nothing happens in the interim, because whenever you pass the, if you pass the updated regulations, it's 30 days before those pass as well, so as long as that, you know, that could be another couple of months, depending on how long that goes. But, actually, specifically, the other legislation is required to have a hearing, so the other legislation can't pass tonight, it has to give the wait at least to have a hearing next week, which is scheduled next time, for any, any of these changes in the code. So, part of what this one is, is we have received complaints from residents and businesses, adjacent businesses, this is where a lot of these vape shops are, so we have received those. We have continual violation of sign, if you've seen a lot of these places, there's a lot of big neon signs and such on these, so they're, this is something we're constantly chasing to try to, try to alleviate, when, if you've seen these, and usually in strip centers. And Vince can give you more details on some of those. The other thing is, we just don't have any regulations, so right now, they're just a retail, there's nothing in there about these stores at all. And usually when we start adding regulations, is when we have, you know, a number of them to start looking at. So there isn't anything in that right now. We like to add that. Most, a lot of cities are, have regulations and limiting the number of them in and around their cities, so we're not, we're not new in that. The state's been really slow to adopt rules for non-regulated CBD hemp-related products. They've indicated they are, but they have been, they have been slow to do that, so a lot of these stores end up being unregulated sort of low CBD dispensaries.
And where are all the people yelling about them?
So, that just tends to be, and a lot of, a lot of people we get called about, they do both. We have, we have marijuana dispensary people calling and wanting to open vape shops, right? You know, we have quite a few of those calling and wanting to do that, so, and there again, Vince can give you more details on that. And I guess, lastly, the moratorium was, after some of the conversations we had with council related to recreational marijuana, and since there's, there is a connection related, related here, that's why that was proposed, so. Any other details? Vince can...
Thank you. Yeah, just to elaborate on what Joel just talked about, I guess it's important to go back to look at why the amendment to the text is before you, which is the next ordinance. That came about, as Joel said, comments received from boards and commission members, from the general public, and including real estate professionals in the community that are having a hard time filling empty spots that are adjacent to or close by to an existing vapor or electronic cigarette store. So that, that made us go and look at what are other cities doing about similar, single, single-source businesses? And I was surprised, because I had never looked at it before, and how many other communities throughout Ohio are already regulating vape and electronic cigarette stores in their zoning regulations, some of them with requiring an outright ban, no, no vape stores permitted at all, or in addition to what's already in the community, up to a two-mile distance between one vape store to another smoke or tobacco vape-related business. So that made us look at, that made us look at the regulations and come up with what we thought would be something that would work within the city of Worcester, and when, I was really surprised when you map out all the existing locations in the city, that you find nine locations, with five of them located within just a short distance of each other, the oversaturation of one particular business. So as I was writing the other amendments that are separated in the, the second ordinance coming to you, both of which, by the way, have been the planning commission and unanimously recommended for approval, for council to adopt, to our text amendments. So, related to that, in the discussions for recreational dispensaries and the moratorium that's currently in place, I had been receiving numerous calls from potential dispensaries on wanting an update on what's happening with Worcester legislation. Some of them continuously monitor activities of planning commission and of city council to see if anything is coming up on the agenda, and when, to be frank, a couple of the dispensaries saw what was pending in front of planning commission for recommendation to city council, I started getting more calls for vape and electronic cigarette stores. So that, mixed with the comments of, was it, two weeks ago, we had a discussion, the laws committee met regarding the dispensaries, we drafted the moratorium, that's before you this evening, and it's a temporary moratorium just until the discussion on the next ordinance is either acted upon or altered or denied for the tax amendments. This would prevent my office from issuing any new permits until either regulations are put in place, amended, or not put in place.
And this has to be done in one reading?
Well...
Why?
I would, Mr. Scavelli could probably answer that, but if I were to receive an application and there's not a moratorium in place, I would be forced to, and if it's in the proper zoning code and they meet all the other regulations of today's zoning code, I would have to issue a permit.
I understand that, I don't have a problem with that, I understand that, but we've been issuing permits for nine of them so far, so, and that's been going on over years, why didn't this ever come to the attention of the city or city council before? And my follow-up question is, bottom line is, this should have been something that was looked at at the same time as the recreational marijuana, and we, you know, we could have done the zoning, everything, moratorium, zoning, everything all at one time, and we knew that was coming, and now we have this too, and, and I understand that we don't have regulations and we need regulations. I understand that, I just, I have never been shy about voicing my displeasure about having to pass something on one reading. I don't think it gives us or the citizens enough time to, to give things some thought. And the only thing that pushes me to go with this, this time, is because we don't have any zoning. But I will tell you, before this came on the agenda, nobody talked to me about it, and I'm chair of the laws and ordinances, and nobody came to me and said, this is coming down the road, and this is why we want this done. And so, I mean, we got information, but I think that there should have been better communication. I, again, don't like to pass things on a first reading, and I think that if we're going to do this, maybe we ought to look at all of, all of the recreational dispensaries and the vape shops and the drive-throughs and all the same things. I know we have drive-through regulations and local regulations in town, but, yeah, I just, I just wanted to voice my concerns over, I mean, I'm not against it, I just don't, I'm against how it's being handled, that it's, that we've got to get this done again.
Yeah, here, once again, they bring it last minute and don't tell you.
I appreciate the comment, if I can just add...
Yeah, you go ahead.
This came about, this is a temporary moratorium until there's a chance for council to review...
I understand.
...the full set of text amendments establishing the regulations for smoking electronic cigarette stores. And that allows during that time, for November 4th, I believe, the hearing is scheduled, and then depending on what action is either taken or not taken that night, as you know, text amendments can't be passed on an emergency basis, so they have to sit for 30 days before they go into effect. This allows what the intent of those regulations are to be, I guess, stalled until a point that those regulations are into effect.
That's assuming we agree with the regulations.
Well, I assume, yeah.
That's never given either.
And if they're denied, or if they're not...
Then it just goes back to the way it is now.
Goes back to the way it is today.
I understand. And I was aware of this on, on the horizon, and I just didn't know that it was going to be brought to us today for, to be passed on one reading, John.
Ms. Knappich, I wanted to say that we weren't trying to push anything or wait last minute. The genesis of this really came after the zoning code amendments, which have been in the process for quite some time, and a lot of this, the moratorium talk really happened after our last meeting, when it seemed as if there was a real concern about the possible dangers of vape and tobacco shops, especially with, I think it's Delta 9 and other things. So this happened pretty quickly between, especially Vince and I, and the rest of the administration, once, honestly, after the last meeting, because we were saying, well, we're doing this, but in the meantime, we want to make sure that we keep everything status quo, as the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting. So we're not trying to get it in last minute, we're not trying to squeeze something in, but if we don't do this now, there's a good chance that a lot of the controls that we're looking to put in place may become somewhat meaningless in the next several months, while we're waiting for that law to become effective. And so that's, that's really what we're pushing, and we thought that after we heard the concerns from council last time, that this was a good step.
Thank you, appreciate that. Can you look in the zoning ordinance to make sure there's nothing else out there we missed that we haven't regulated? I don't want any more surprises, we only have things that are regulated, so, I'd appreciate that.
One of the comments that was asked about adjacent business owners, I've actually heard over the last number of years, and the first one was quite a few years ago, I don't know how to describe where it is, it's up by Buffalo Wild Wings, that little shopping plaza, there is a yogurt shop and a vape shop waiting next door, and that, that was a real, the man sold the yogurt shop. It was just such a detriment to try to, you know, for families to come in, they didn't like coming into that environment, and the atmosphere was really difficult. So some businesses really just shouldn't really be next to each other, and it's kind of up to the city and our zoning to, to make sure that those things, doesn't say that can't be here, and they have their right, the customers have their right to get those products, but there are some things that just don't necessarily go hand in hand. So that was the first, I've had several, more complaints than we have a new one, that's between Jersey Mike's Sub Shop and Pulp, and a lot of kids are going to the Pulp smoothies. So, again, it's probably, there's not a problem with that type of business in our community, just that sometimes it's not the right location, so. I have heard complaints about that. I do agree with Ms. Knappich, moving things kind of last minute fast without communicating with council in advance is sometimes problematic, but I do understand also, Mr. Scavelli, it's just a moratorium until we can look at the rules, so I get that part, too.
Do we rule to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules...
Second.
...by Ms. Knappich, second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Hussey?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Knappich?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Hussey?
Yes.
All right. At least we've got some control for now. And I do have to say that I wasn't going to, I'm going to anyways. While I understand council's somewhat admonishment related to the timing of this, I think that was a little disingenuous, because we did listen to almost 45 minutes of a committee meeting last two weeks ago about the ills of that type of business.
Oh, I understand, and it was me.
And so, well, I know, but, but my point is, is that the administration listened, they heard, and, again, between the other stuff that's going on with the zoning changes, I mean, this was actually, in my mind, a pretty quick response to a situation that could have gotten much worse, much quicker, if we hadn't done what we did. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we can gripe and groan about timing, but sometimes you got to pull the trigger sooner versus later, so, at this point...
I understand that, but my comments regarding the vape shops were not, as far as the zoning and regulations, when it was the products that they sold or didn't sell, and those we don't have any regulation, we don't have any authority over anyhow, so, but I appreciate, Vince, I really do appreciate you jumping on this and realizing that we don't have the zoning for this, and getting it on, just to make sure that we can get some zoning put in. Thank you.
All right, well, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read ordinance 2024-28 for us, please.
Ordinance number 2024-28, an ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the planning commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
All right, Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is a follow-up piece of legislation to the moratorium that talks about the zoning changes that we want to make, or that the city wants to make. I am going to keep that on first reading, because I think that we need another couple weeks to take a look at it, and to get comments back from the public, and for the public to take a look at it, and, and then, John, you said we had a hearing, we will have a hearing November 4th, our next meeting?
Correct, we have to have a public hearing, so, yes.
Okay, so, that'll be helpful, to get the input from the public, and, so at this point, I'll just leave it on first reading. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So it's had its first reading, and we'll move on to our last ordinance, 2024-29, but Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-29, an ordinance to approve and adopt... Ordinance number 2024-29, an ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the planning commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
Ms. Knappich, floor is yours.
Yep, this is, again, another zoning ordinance, recommendations, and the information is quite lengthy. Again, I'm going to leave this one on first reading, just so that we have an opportunity to go through, get all the information, review all the information, do any research we want to do, and have the public weigh in on proposed zoning changes.
All right, very good. Any questions from council? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. That's our new business items.
President Sanders, I'd like to make a motion, like to make a motion to change the to-limit time allowed for public comment this evening to four minutes for those who have already signed up for the meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion to adjust the time from two minutes to four minutes this evening. Is there someone that wants to second that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, I guess, well, I don't know, do we need to?
Acclamation, I believe it's an acclamation vote.
Do we need to call a roll vote on that, Mr. Scavelli?
Council, we need to give an acclamation.
All right, well, all in favor, council, please by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, everybody, tonight's got four minutes, so, there you go.
You don't have to use it all, just.
I would suggest you do, since he insisted that he gave you four minutes, I'd say, let's roll with four, so.
Devil's bus.
So with that, so with that, our first person that's signed up is Mike and Tammy Townsend. Want to come on up to the podium there and tell us about roundabouts?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to tell you, we live right in the middle of it. We don't want it to happen. It affects how we pull in and out of our driveway, it affects our property value, we're planning on taking a huge chunk of it. My granddaughter goes to Edgewood, often walks to our house, she will never be able to do that. I have grandchildren that go to the high school same way, they won't be able to cross. And she has gotten several statements from the school, and somebody said that the bus drivers and all that is for the roundabout. A lot of them are very against it. They are not for the roundabout, we have signatures, we're going to continue to get signatures.
Did you, I don't know if any of, last time I was here, several of you have not seen this yet, I don't know if everybody got a chance to see what they're proposing to do to everybody's property.
Well, that's just a preliminary.
I said propose.
Very preliminary, it's not even a final proposal.
I understand that, but I think that maybe everybody here should have a chance to have a second proposal before this is.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I just hope that we're all kept in the loop of what's going on, so, you know, you know, we don't want to be blindsided and, well, surprised.
Agreed, I agree.
And then, my granddaughter would like to talk a little bit.
So I would like to remind everybody here that roundabouts do not stop, they cannot stop, you cannot find a way to stop them. It's what keeps traffic going. So if you plan to, like, try to find a safety way around that, for kids like my age to walk to school, that is not going to happen. Hopefully that changes your mind today.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe it's Trevor Fetzer of Rebecca Street, wants to talk to us about Knightsfield Park.
Am I able to hand these out to you guys?
Absolutely, please.
I must admit, my neighbor lied to me, he said there was going to be five of you, so, I mean, can I copy?
It was only seven, so, okay.
Oh, dude, there, you don't, there's.
I'll be right back, I'll hop in for you.
Okay.
I want to give you guys a sec.
We can share.
We can share.
Anything important.
Okay. All right, do I need to wait on him to come back, or?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Trevor Fetzer, I reside at 821 Rebecca Street here in Worcester. Tonight, I would like to take the opportunity to talk to you about some events that have drawn concern of mine in the neighborhood, in my neighborhood. Over the last several weeks, a growing threat and the rising of Knightsfield Park that has drawn not only mine, but many of my neighbors, my members of my neighborhood, which are here, we're here.
And some of them over there.
And the police force that have to tend to the issue upon being called to the scene. Now, I must confess, I'm not sure if you guys know the issue I will speak of, so please take me being here as a purely informative presence, and not one where I'm trying to cast blame or guilt. The issues I wish to raise come in a large part regarding a group of juveniles who have been causing countless problems, ranging from noise complaints to assaulting adults and other minors, and everything in between. I know the incidents, I know these things to be true, because I have security cameras on my property that record these incidences and more. I speak with you guys, because at every onset of these events, the police are called to respond, and I have submitted several videos and photos to them of the incidences, yet nothing is done due to these individuals being minors, as we have been told by the police. I have talked with the police several times, and they have given me several suggestions, ranging from speaking to the juvenile prosecutor's office to see what my options are, at which I was responded to with, "I cannot give you legal advice, and this is not an issue I can help you with at this time, you need to keep calling the police, sorry, there is nothing more I can tell you," from their office, to calling you guys at city council, and speaking with city hall, at which I also attempted several times through the calling process, but no one seemed to answer, at which time I left a voicemail that was reported to the police department, at which they reached out to me, but no one in city hall was able to contact me. So I felt the best to come here tonight, to see you guys, to hear my concerns. So, for the last few weeks, the police have responded several times at the park, including noise complaints, assaulting minors, assaulting adults, harassing other park owners, throwing sticks and rocks at vehicles passing by the park, harassing and threatening homeless, and threatening neighbors near the park. And I know the pavilion and its utilities are in place to promote the park, and entice the public to visit and enjoy it, and studies have shown this to be the case. Sadly, as of late, these amenities seem to have given these individuals the opportunity to turn this once peaceful park into a hunting ground for their unsuspecting breath. Now, in truth, I'd love nothing more than the request you to remove the wifi and electricity entirely, but I do not see that as a reasonable option. On the other hand, I do ask that you shut down the wifi and the power entirely in the pavilion, but leave it available to be turned on per request to the city, Worcester City Hall, Parks Department, for event planning, which can conveniently be reached at 330-263-5200 at extension number three, who are available Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., except on holidays, of course. I place, I would also like to request that all the picnic tables be secured to the ground, so they cannot be placed in the middle of the street, like this one in the photo of number one at the bottom.
I wondered what that was.
Placed by these individuals, in photo number two at the top of page one and two. And also, the same individuals on page three, where.
Is that a ramp?
And four, where they, the police responded to events.
Looks like a ramp.
Where these, this group of boys attempted to jump a 12-year-old girl, who had failed, and then continued to threaten a pregnant mother across the street. All of which can be viewed on this USB drive, where I compiled several photos and videos for you, some of which have been sent to the police upon their request. This entire group of about 10 individuals.
Can I ask questions? You can use my time to finish.
I only have two sentences.
Go ahead.
Allow me to finish.
Please finish.
This entire group of about 10 individuals can be found on the last page. Almost all the things here I have tonight requested are not a cure-all, but I feel is a step in the right direction to help deter individuals from lingering at this park for so long, and limit the ability to cause these issues. And although addressing city council is not my final step, it's a step I have been instructed to take now. So with all the information upon your guys' approval, I would ask that you read everything I had to say into the minutes.
Thank you.
Are these, are these individuals identified, are they neighborhood kids, are there kids coming in from other neighborhoods?
I myself do not know exactly where they are from. I do know a good few of them come from different areas in the neighborhood, some from the Rebecca Street apartments at the far end, and others come up from, I don't know where, but they come from the other direction in Worcester, the east, or the west side.
The west side.
I know the police have identified several, due to crimes that have not committed last night upon thousands of the neighbors' cars, that they've had issues with where they have been called, but minors have not had any reports. And I have also requested the reports, records for the park for the last 30 days, in which there were none, and I received that, and I'm still waiting, which I just spoke with the officer back here, he's giving me some more instructions on how to get my hands on a few more of those items, with different methods than what I was instructed on the phone by the records department.
Excellent.
So if I understand you correctly, these are the same kids doing this kind of activity over and over again, or is it, seem like it's different kids?
There's a group of about 10 kids, they're not all present at the same time. There are a vast majority between eight of, eight, I'd say five to eight of them are the exact same kids in every situation. I personally don't know who they are, I have them all on camera, I have them showing up in the same vehicles every day when they're brought there, I have them stayed there by their parents at the park, my cameras are motion sensors, so as soon as somebody pulls in my park next month, because I show the property where it was them, the cameras go off. And I have turned three cameras to the park alone, and only have one watching the front of the property, because this has gone on to where I've watched them, I mean, they use the above-ground fire pits to light fires, throw leaves in there to smoke other people out, so they leave the park, I've watched them scream all types of profanity and racist things to get people to pick their kids up and leave.
So adults just drop them off?
Some of these kids walk there from parks, and their parents, and they ride bikes there, but I do see their parents picking them up in the evening. Some of the parents know of this activity, because one of the people had the issue, had the mom's number and called her, and she said she does not care. And I have posted videos of fistfights between two kids, and the mother has commented on the photo, letting us know they're brother and sister, and if they fight like this at home, and they do not care.
Does this become an issue of child protective services if we can identify the kids?
It has.
They've been contacted already.
Mr. Fetzer, can I, what, can you explain, what are we looking at in picture one?
Picture one is right, here, I'll show you online, because they're in color, sorry, the light broke. Picture one is a picnic table that these kids here in these photos, and also, it's the same group of kids in every photo, these are the same boys in all the photos, that were walking in the park, the exact same time that they placed these kids here.
Is this just somebody laying down shoes?
Yes, he's laying down. This is the night that they, there was an issue, where the police were called for threatening a pregnant lady, and for attempting to jump a 12-year-old child. And she is here as well, she's sitting here. She was the one that was threatened, they were chased into their house. I have video footage of it on the USB drive attached, and everything. And I was instructed to call a different places, they told me to call city hall, because you guys have the ability to broaden the police's abilities, I would, only way I can do it, I know you can't change laws, but there are things you guys can do, because the parks are under your guys' control.
Right.
And that is all I'm asking, I'm not saying I want you to press charges on juveniles, but I am asking you guys for assistance and help, because there are a lot of people scared, and there have been people hurt. This lady right here, Christie, had been pushed to the ground on camera, told that she can do nothing. These people over here, these kids, there's their son, Aiden, has been harassed by them, which resulted last night, it's not a result, but it is a symptom of the larger, of the larger problem. These kids, two of which have been identified on their camera system, took glass mason jars and shattered their car window at 11:45 last night on their property, trespassed on their property, and shattered their windows out on their car.
I'm curious, law and order is still law and order, why are we not able to pick these kids up?
I don't know.
I'm asking our city officials.
So, we don't arrest juveniles, it's pretty much, you have to contact the prosecutor, they've got to be an immediate threat to somebody before we will lock them up.
Is that a policy?
That's not the way of society today, that we're putting these kids in jail.
But it's not the way of society, that we're going to let them threaten law-abiding citizens. I mean, I will tell you that the advice to go to the prosecutor's office, no offense, is worthless, because they will not pursue it, they don't have the time or the resources to pursue it, but I don't understand.
We're in an endless cycle here.
Yeah.
Because you're telling them to go to the prosecutor, prosecutor sends them to you.
Sure.
Then they're sending to us, then we're sending to there, there's never a resolution, these kids have figured it out.
And they can do whatever they want?
And they can do whatever they want.
And they know nobody's going to arrest them, why not?
It's no different in the adult world, either, I can tell you that we've arrested people, and they're back walking the streets before we even get the paperwork done.
I'm sure they are, but we've got to do something.
Been the entire night talking about that type of stuff, what I will tell you is that we're, we're well aware of what's going on, there's been reports made, he's asked for some reports, specifically at Knightsfield Park, not all of this is happening.
Right.
At that address, so it won't be under that address.
Oh, nice.
So, we are, we are well aware of what's going on, unsure of why this has kind of blown up in the last two weeks, because probably really about the last two weeks. We've ramped up our patrols there, understand, too, that if we take a report today, it gets sent to the prosecutor's office, it could sit there for a lengthy period of time. I can tell you that there's been reports that have sat there for six months.
I understand that, but to me, it does not make sense that we don't enforce the law, because it takes a long time. That, that's not, that is not an acceptable excuse, that we are not enforcing the law because it doesn't make a difference. It really doesn't make a difference, if we don't enforce the law.
I just want to say, I don't want to bash the police or anything, they have helped me at every turn, and they have shown up and sent these kids away at every turn, and they have been.
No, we're not bashing the police either.
No, 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 we're not at all.
We're saying that they're getting handcuffed, and we're trying to figure out how we can take the handcuffs off.
Well, the one thing I think we could talk to the Parks Department about turning off wifi and power, making that only available when pavilions are around, that's something that is within the jurisdiction of our administration, I think that's, I would suggest you all do that if you think it's appropriate. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, I'm not sure what we can do right here tonight to solve that. I'm glad that the police department is engaged, I don't want to bash the police, but I think that if every one of the residents called every time there was an incident, it might just kind of pile up on the prosecutor's office, that they might have to do something.
And maybe we can do a temporary next meeting, and push this right through, is the suggestion?
I don't want to overcommit or overpromise, but this is the first that I'm hearing of this, and I appreciate Mr. Fetzer and everyone else coming forward. Let me commit to council that, and to Mr. Fetzer and the people here with him, that next council meeting, we'll have a report back to you about, you know, what we found out, if we've got any recommendations, things that we, you know, there's some things that we can do, as Mr. Myers said, you know, there's some easy, low-hanging fruit here that we can go after pretty easily, there's some other things that may not be able to accomplish, so, I'm not going to say that we can address the problem between now and the next meeting, but we can at least come up with a plan of action, preliminary for what we can address. So if that, again, that may come off as a weak answer, but I, that's all I can commit to at this point.
No, I don't think it's a weak answer at all, I think, I agree, it's fair, and there are some things that we can do, too, that, you know, as far as turning off the wifi, bolting down the picnic tables so they're not put out in the middle of the street, and just, you know, I've always, and I didn't mean to sound like I was coming down on the police, because.
No, not at all.
Every time they, you know, they're called, they're out. They've helped me hugely when I was in Ward, and, but we just, it's frustrating, it's frustrating that law-abiding citizens have to put up with this, because they're juveniles. And, and that is, and it's just shame, a shame, so anything you guys can do to help.
I think we all agree, it's unacceptable.
Right.
And we're going to see what we can do to address that, again, there's no silver bullet out there that's a cure-all, but we'll see what we can do.
I think, I think all of us old people should go down and sit in the park, take turns, so that we're like hanging out there, watching these kids, and then we can like.
I can see it now, Barb Knappich, she's really anti.
Right now, you will, that will be a whole.
She'll be interested.
Maybe our next council meeting's held down.
We just have to make it like, not attractive to them. Best thing I can think of for teenagers, for people like me to hang out in their spaces.
Thanks, so I do so much for your coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I did want to tell you, thank you very much, and I did, to rest of council, I did speak with Chief Fisher this morning about some of this, because I was seeing it pop up on social media quite a bit, and I did have a resident reach out to me and mention they had, they had their landscaping lights all ripped out of their yard and thrown at the neighbor's house, and there were a few other things, I think somebody's garage window was broken, and a few other things, and that was before last night's incident. last night's incident with the car window being broken. So I just want to tell you, at least, and any other residents, that you're being heard tonight, and I know sometimes it feels like you're not being heard when you're trying to work through the proper channels. I can't promise obviously anything right at this moment, except that I think all of us would be unified. I can't speak for everybody, I guess, but in trying to help figure out a solution or a way forward with this, I did, do you know that the police chief did tell me that he was going to look at increasing patrols in the area just initially, as they're looking into some of these things. But, yeah, just want to let you know that. Appreciate you guys coming tonight and sharing this with us for sure.
You're my councilman?
I'm your councilman. Right. Please call me if you feel like you're not being heard. Also, would this fall underneath, would this fall underneath Safety Committee if we wanted to meet with the police department and talk through some of these things, maybe be briefed or updated on this and talk through what a potential plan of action could be or what our options are?
Yeah, and I would just say, I've already sent a message to them to say that just prepare something to share.
Okay.
And then we can, once we have that, we can discuss when that fits into your
Yeah, could be public health and leisure too. Yep. Okay.
If I could take a brief moment, and this is a little bit of a soapbox, but I would just like to encourage everyone to hold your judges accountable. Hold your prosecutors accountable. I mean, they're the ones who are really letting things slip through the cracks and not keeping people where they maybe need to be. So keep that in mind when you vote in November.
Thank you. The prosecutor's up for election?
No, not this time. At the state level, there's lots of judges that are up for election.
I'm going to guess your memory is going to be long on this one, though.
Well, this is, yeah, this is an ongoing problem. And it's not just happening now. I, this has, I think it happened a couple of weeks ago on the west side of town, and I remember over the summer, I did have a conversation with Mr. Mayor about it. You must have forgotten, there was a group of well-known youths who were jumping people at the park. I know you said, well, I was at the park and I didn't see anything, but it's something that's been going on, and it's got to be very frustrating, obviously, to the police force as well, that your hands are tied, you can't do anything about it. So we need to figure out, I guess, creative solutions to this problem.
And one question I guess I have would be with the prosecutor's office, do we have any mechanisms from city council to help encourage the prosecutor's office to take a look at things?
Well, we pay them.
So not really.
We don't pay them?
Well, we do pay them, but we pay
Like we vote on it every year, so.
True, we pay them for the prosecution of adult misdemeanors, which is something
So their parents could be held accountable, perhaps?
Well, if you could find a part of their high-rise code to charge them, sure.
Their kids are out at eleven forty-five at night, criminal violation?
We'd have to see what the facts are and what they would apply to as far as a part of the code that's a criminal violation, however. As far as what we pay them for, we pay the prosecutor for our adult misdemeanor prosecution, which is technically our responsibility under state law and our charter. However, child misdemeanors and felonies, or juvenile child, juvenile misdemeanors and felonies are going to be something that would be handled by the county prosecutor and not by us in any way. Now, we can make requests, we can possibly put pressure, but we have no direct control over what the prosecutor would do under their jurisdiction. They're a separate, separately elected official, and we have no control over their decisions.
Okay.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you, Travis, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
Mr. Masaro.
I'm the one that thought there were five of you. I live at nine twenty-four, Rebecca Street. I'm about a block away from where all this happens. I've lived down there for forty-two years, and in a handful of occasions, I've had to come out of my house for one reason or another and settle a dispute in the road, run the sidewalk or wherever it was. And in forty-two years, that's not too bad. But what's gone on in the last couple, three weeks is way beyond tolerance. And if we don't get something done, something real ugly is going to happen. I don't want, the worst thing, I don't want to have a police officer ever have to shoot somebody. I don't want anybody getting shot up there. So I spoke with Captain Lemon tonight, I've known him for quite a few years, and I trust his law enforcement judgment and dedication, and all I could ask is, Mr. Mayor, if you talked to the chief and ask him to give full cooperation to Captain Lemon to get this fixed, I believe we'd have our solution, and we'd have peace in that neighborhood again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. And then our last, we've got two people left. Mr. and Mrs. Barnett.
I'm not going to throw a scene, but I will tell you that the gentleman has worked with us on the map a couple times. But with the new map, I am, I work on the north end, and I am going to have to turn left instead of turn right to go to work. I'm going to be stuck in my house, which I'm not going to like. I have dreamt for this house for a long time, and I finally got my dream, and now because of the roundabout, I don't know about my dream anymore. So the front of the house, with the new plan, which you guys said you already got, it shows that we're not even going to be able to get out the front or the side. Okay. A few things, a few concerns I have is for pedestrians. Like she said, she walks to school. I have a kid that walks from, I think, Kanan, no, the street up from us walks or rides his bike every day to school. He goes to the, he goes to the light and he crosses because he goes to Keene. We have people constantly walking up and down the street, using their bikes, electric bikes and everything else. Now, what's going to happen this summer when we have the camp kids that has to cross the street to go to the pool at Friedlander Pool? And there's a lot of kids, and there's like two or three groups of them that either go through the high school or Keene, and they walk. So where are they going to walk to go to the Friedlander Park? I mean, would you want your kid trying to cross a busy intersection or the peanut, that you guys are calling it?
Yeah.
Okay. A comment was made last time from Mr. Montgomery about bus drivers. Let me tell you, I was a bus driver for the city of Worcester. I did drive the transit buses, which I introduced myself to him today, for six years. I also drove for Worcester City Schools, and I also drove for Wayne County Board. I never had any issues with that life, never. In all the years that I had been driving, I never had any issues. Chris came to our house two weeks ago and we was talking. I'm a nosy person, I like to sit on my front porch or on my couch and watch cars go by. What's going to happen when you get a roundabout and the cops are going to have a hard time going through the intersection, the fire trucks? The other day, there was a fire engine coming by. Well, the school bus thought that they could beat the fire engine, so they come out and that made the fire truck slow down to make sure that he could get through to go to where he had to go. The seconds is going to count. I mean, I don't want to be responsible for this roundabout to cause injury. It's like the other day, there was a state away patrol, a policeman and sheriff all went zooming down through there. And every day you have the fire chief heading down that way, and then you'll be expecting to see one or two cop cars, and you'll be expecting to see the fire engines. There's just, there's not enough room. When I had kids in Worcester City Schools, you had to go early because the traffic going to the high school to drop your kids off is ridiculous. So if you're in the roundabout, that's going to stop people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Barnett?
Well, she stole all my materials.
Next time.
But, Mr. Barnett, you and I have known each other a long time, and I know you're going to talk anyway.
I'm not going to apologize for last week.
No, and you shouldn't.
Shouldn't.
I was speaking from my heart, okay? The neighbor and I have crossed the street to get our mail. They're eighty years old, I'm in my seventies. When you take that light out, there's going to be no way for you to cross that street. Safety concern, I'm serious. I drove a school bus for five years for the Worcester City Schools. Out of the twenty-five years I put in Worcester City Schools, that intersection did bother me a bit, but I guarantee you, you put a yield sign, that bus is forty feet long, a car seventeen and a half feet long on the average, it takes three times the space to get out. Do we understand that? What are you going to do about the intersection at eighty-three and Friendsville Road? Are you going to put a roundabout there too? The traffic's backed up to Hiltondale? The traffic during the Boys and Girls Cross Country Meet Invitational was backed up third to my house to go out that way. We're a growing town, get over it. Now, before my time runs out, I want to throw in something for these people. I used to be in that neighborhood. Put a curfew in. Make the parents responsible with a fine of two, three, four hundred dollars. I bet that stuff stops. I was in New Verge last week, and the person called me from West, I was on vacation with my daughter, and someone said, you need to YouTube that meeting. I'm a plat, I'm a registered voter, that's all I got to say. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Mr. Gaffey, anything to add this evening?
Just that I really appreciate the residents that came out, both to speak about the roundabout and also about the issues around Knightsfield. I think it's extremely important to let city council know what's going on, and I hope that we all can work together to figure something out to help address some of these issues. I know some people have communicated to me that they're afraid to even walk through their neighborhood over there right now because of some of the incidences that have happened. And so I don't know what is in our power to do, but, you know, hopefully we can figure that out and, you know, do whatever we're able. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Warden?
Thank you, I think that's a great point, and yes, thank you to all the public that came up and spoke to us this evening about obviously some issues that are very near and dear to their hearts and their homes. I think that we've got to come up, like I said, with creative solutions to this. I kind of like Mr. Barnett's idea of imposing a more strict curfew, at least for the time being. I don't know if that's something that we're within our rights to be able to do. I believe so, but at the same time, I think this is, it goes down to the parents. I mean, take responsibility for your children, this is embarrassing. I see, I know that a lot of the administration, we've talked about this kind of jokingly a little bit, they're not huge fans of social media, don't use it very much, but you're really missing out on a lot of communication from the public who perhaps don't understand some of the channels that we use to communicate to city council or to city hall. There's a lot of chatter going on, it's been going on for months, about some of the more dangerous behaviors that are happening in our downtown, in our parks, and I think it needs to be taken seriously, and I know that we don't want to jump on every rumor and piece of gossip that we get, but these are, we work really hard to make a community where people want to come and spend time and spend money and move, and I'm hearing a lot of people say that they're not comfortable, they don't feel safe right now. That's a big problem, and it's something that we need to take more seriously, I think. The final thing that I just wanted to say is, what a relief to have these railway crossings or these railway intersections, you know, repaved or whatever it is they're doing. It's making a huge difference, and if you haven't driven down Palmer Street yet, just, it's like, it's like getting one of those big, you know, nineteen-seventies cars with the smooth ride. I mean, you don't feel like every nut and bolt's going to fall off your car. It's fantastic, so thank you for helping that to come to fruition. I don't know who, I know it was the railroads, but I'm sure that there was a lot of complaining that got them motivated, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malta?
Keep it short. I just want to thank everybody for attending, as always, and appreciate it, means a lot.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you. Well, with regard to the roundabout, I would like to encourage the city administration and our engineering folks to look at alternates that take less residents' properties and perhaps encroach into the soccer fields or the soccer field parking, and eliminate really going into residence areas if the roundabout is going to be pursued, I think an alternate that does that, or an alternate that goes, that doesn't do a roundabout at all that just continues straight into the soccer fields until you get close to Keene and then turn right and make a square. I know that there's a couple buildings there, not sure if those could go between them or if they'd have to be relocated. With regard to the buses, I think that that's definitely more of a consideration. I think they just, the call was that we're going to be able to drive up over the curb, but, you know, kids in school buses don't have seat belts, and you drive them up over the curb, they're going to get potentially thrown out of their seat and injured. So I don't think that that's particularly a good solution, that they go up over the curb, but I'm also not wanting the roundabout bigger because that then takes more land, so I know that that's, those are considerations that the city is certainly weighing, and I can appreciate that there's pros and cons. You know, with regard to the amount of traffic, I think we all know that the intersection's been like that for quite some time, and I would say, you know, did we do a traffic study when we built the high school? I don't know if we did. Did we do a traffic study when we built the safety services building? I don't think we did. You know, has there been a car count for soccer games? I know it's busy during those times. I know those are some of the reasons that the city is looking at it now, but I'm just saying it's been that way for quite a long time. And then finally, you might want to, I know you don't want to share any of the planning or things until they're more complete, and you do the process the way you've done it, I can appreciate the reasons for some of those. You know, things that, again, if things get out or you want to get ahead of it, and we've always done it the way we've done it. My concern is, though, that we should continue to spend taxpayer money on a plan that council's not going to support. I'm going to vote against a roundabout in this location. I think, I can't speak for other council members, but why spend money to continue to plan something that's not going to happen? That's borderline fraud. So I think we should make sure that we get ahead of this and communicate, if you don't want to share your plans, at least communicate so you know whether or not we can pass this.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes, thank you there. I'm not going to reiterate everything that was said because it's almost nine o'clock, but I do want to welcome Kevin to the city of Worcester. I'm looking forward to having a fabulous transit system, and I know you're going to do a good job, and thank you to Steve Matthew for bringing in our federal visitor and showing them the sites in Worcester and promoting our businesses and our community. And I just want to say, finally, you know, I've been on and off city council for about, I don't know, twelve years now or so, and I always, always relish when, I was going to say enjoy, but sometimes I don't enjoy it because you're mad at us, but I really do appreciate when citizens come and speak their mind and tell us what they think is good, tell us what they think is bad, and give their input because this is your city. So we appreciate your involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abernathy?
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment to second Mr. Myers's thoughts when it comes to the roundabout. You know, I have a full total agreement on everything, but I think we're in general agreement. I don't know what the process looks like in trying to negotiate with the county, but when we're trying to take land away when we're, when we're trying to take land away from homeowners and taking it right up to their house or close to their house and making it hard for them to get out of their homes, and making it very difficult for people to cross the street, I'm going to, I'm going to join Mr. Myers and say, "I'm going to vote no for this roundabout." And so I can't, I can't in good conscience support it.
It ain't hot for me.
So I would really appreciate, like Mr. Myers said, you know, to be more of the, see more of the process as we go and not just have something presented to us. I would like to be actual part of the process as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who's I?
I just appreciate everybody who showed up today. The passion in this town is evident as always, and it's just what makes it a good place to live and call home. And with that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Just trick or treat is Saturday, for the most part. Please, please, please be careful with your kids and look out for kids running around like little goblins. That's all.
All right.
And I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, a first, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn, thank you all.